Thank you for being here this evening. We'll call this meeting to order. This is our meeting of September the twentieth, which is our recess meeting. We will first stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by an indication from Alderman Sisdrunk and then a moment of silence. Would please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sisdrunk, if you would please.
Loving God, as we gather to do the business of the city of Starkville, help us to build on our common humanity instead of exacerbating our divided ideologies. May we be conduits of your grace, mercy, reconciliation, and love. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. All right. First, we're visiting the approval of the official agenda, including or with consented items. Let's see if there are any changes from the board members. Alderman Carver, any changes from you?
There's one I was gonna ask you about. I believe it was under Parks. No, ma'am. I was just wondering about the separation from the Simmons Field from the other fields. Under Parks, there was consideration for the sole source purchase of field turf logo quote for the Jeffrey Simmons Field versus the other fields. Is it just separate?
It's just a separate amount, different field, different size, different location.
Is that all it is? I was just wondering about that. Okay.
Same vendor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Alderman Rupp, any changes or?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sisdrunk?
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. If not, then I would appreciate a motion to approve the official agenda with the consented items.
I've got one question. Through the sanitation issue, is it? No, it's not consented. Are we pulling that from the agenda?
We are. We are. No, we've modified it to reflect going out for an RFP.
Okay.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
I'm sorry. Alderman Brooks, thank you, sir.
Second.
And a second from Alderman Rupp. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two recess meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Second is consideration of the minutes of the September second, twenty twenty-two work session of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville. Under mayor's business, we had consideration of the interlocal College View Connector Agreement with MSU. Board business, consideration of the approval of the two percent budget for the Student Association in accordance with the requirements of the House Bill fifteen forty-seven. And the Student Association representatives are here tonight just to acknowledge that you came for this particular thing. So consent agenda has been passed and will. I'm just now in the process of reading, so anytime y'all would like to go, but thank you for being here. And I'll say the same thing after I read the two of these to Mr. Taggart. Consideration of the approval of the two percent budget for the October County Economic Development Authority in accordance with the requirements of House Bill fifteen forty-seven. And consideration of the approval of the two percent budget for the Visitors Convention Council in accordance with the requirements of House Bill fifteen forty-seven. Thank you, Mr. Taggart. And page two. Thank you both. We appreciate you being here. Item D is consideration of proceeding with an RFQ for a financial advisor. Item E is resolution of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi declaring the intention to issue general obligation public improvement bonds of the municipality, to issue general obligation public improvement bond of municipality for sale to the Mississippi Development Bank, or to enter into a loan agreement with the Mississippi Development Bank, all in the maximum aggregate principal amount of fifteen million dollars in one or more federally taxable or tax exempt series and for a term of any individual series not to exceed thirty years, to provide funds for improvement to the city's parks and authorized purposes. Item F is consideration of a resolution of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi, authorizing the engagement of certain professionals to assist for the authorization, issuance, sale, validation, and delivery of the proposed general obligation public improvement bonds of the municipality, a general obligation public improvement bond of the municipality for sale to the Mississippi Development Bank, or a loan from the Mississippi Development Bank to the municipality, all in the maximum aggregate principal amount of fifteen million dollars in one or more federally taxable or tax exempt series for improvements to the city's parks and for related matters. Under engineering, we have consideration of approving the selection of Garber Engineering LLC as the preferred consultant to provide preliminary engineering and environmental services for the Stark Road and Hospital Road Extension project. Number two, under engineering, consideration of the design services proposal from Dalhousie Thomas Design Studio for the Cornerstone Boulevard landscaping project and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Under finance and administration, item two is acceptance of the August twenty twenty-two financial statements. Number three is request approval to accept the lowest and best bids received for October one, twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three source of supply listing for the Starkville General City. Number four is consideration of a three-year siren renewal maintenance agreement with Precision Communications. Under fire department, we have request permission to accept a one-hundred percent reimbursable grant, Homeland Security Grant, for the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars to purchase a rescue airbag kit, which will be used in specialized rescue situations, task force training, and deployments. Under human resources, we have number one, authorization to hire Gerald LaMckasky as an assistant city planner in the Community Development Department. Under IT information technology, we have one, request permission to accept a one-hundred percent reimbursable grant, Homeland Security Grant, for the amount of forty-one thousand dollars to purchase a backup generator, which will be used by the city in the City Hall Data Center. Under Parks, we have consideration for the sole source purchase for field turf logo quote from Jeffrey for the Jeffrey Simmons Field at the Sportsplex in the amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. And two is consideration for sole source purchase for field turf logos, option two, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Under police, we have item one A, which is request permission to accept a one-hundred percent reimbursable grant, Homeland Security Grant, for the amount of twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to purchase tactical equipment. Item B is request permission to accept a one-hundred percent reimbursable grant, Homeland Security Grant, for the amount of twenty-three thousand to purchase an automated license plate recognition system. C is request approval to purchase a used black twenty-fourteen Ford Explorer Police Interceptor, all-wheel-drive AWD with seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight miles, VIN number ending in three, six, one, nine, from Asia Motors, Inc. in Melrose Park, Illinois, for a total cost of nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, which was is within the estimated fair market value range for this used vehicle. Under code enforcement, we have consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven to determine whether the structure is located at two-ten West Gillespie Street with parcel number one oh two B dash zero zero dash three two one point zero zero is a minister of Public Health, Safety, and Welfare of the community. Item B is consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven to determine whether the structure is located at one-twelve Fellowship Street with parcel number one oh one D dash zero zero dash zero four zero point zero zero is a minister of the Public Health, Safety, and Welfare of the community. Under the Utilities Department, we have number one is request approval of the renewal of the Distribution Insurance Company, DIC, property casualty insurance proposal for Starkville Utilities Electric Division. Number two is request authorization to approve Anita Vandiver to serve as a contractor for Starkville Utilities in the Finance Division. Three, request authorization to purchase eighteen manholes for the Water Division from Consolidated Pipe, the lower of two quotes, in the amount of eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents for stock inventory. Under four is request approval of change order number one for the Babylon Sewer Project. Number five is request authorization to accept the lowest quote from SEL Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories for four SEL pump automation controllers in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty cents. And number six is authorization for the mayor to execute the work order request from Fort County in the estimated amount of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and sorry, thirty-seven thousand, ninety-two dollars and twelve cents with a monthly charge of four hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents for the installation of streetlights along Eastley Boulevard, Old Mayhew Road, and adjacent areas, with the final payment being based on final quantities and work. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
My pleasure. All right, our next item is going to be mayor's comments. And so I thought I was gonna have some introductions today, but I do not. So what I will do is make sort of a round comment about the fact that we have a game day weekend coming up, which is always exciting because that, you know, that puts us out there. Our sanitation department works hard. Our police department works hard for game day weekends. Our fire department's always on the ready. So we appreciate all that they do to make those game day weekends fun and safe. And we look forward to a win here in town. So that plus, we have an October seventh citywide tailgate event coming up that has just kind of been announced. And we're gonna participate as a city. So I'll have the board members, I hope, put that on your calendar. And we'll come out and enjoy the tailgate that we did a few years back. So COVID shut us down, but we're gonna start it back up again. And that's all the comments I have. Board of Alderman comments? Alderman Carver, anything from you, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I feel that two questions. I didn't know the answer to the last couple of days. One, somebody, I know you noticed the mural coming up under the lights down here, but who is doing that?
That's Julie Brown's building, and she has asked Deborah Mansfield, who is out of West Point, who's got murals in multiple places around this town, around West Point, Columbus. Deborah Mansfield is doing that work.
Phenomenal work. Second, maybe should ask the engineer before or privately. The Boulevard right there in front of the cinema, what is the final design of that? Like, is it landscaped out or is it?
Hollywood Boulevard. Mr. Burnett, would you mind coming up and giving us a little bit of a update on that? I actually noticed that the other day. I thought, you know, it looks kind of.
Yeah, I tell you why. People are just starting to kind of throw trash in there, and it's a mosquito pit, and I didn't know the answer, so I can ask you.
Well, it's, there's not a final landscape design. We've got, we do have a landscape architectural staff, I think, would assist us. But there is kind of open up to really just opinion at this point. We don't have a final design. We've talked about some shrubbery-type landscaping, maybe some specific types of trees. Of course, irrigation can be an issue. But there's not a final design at the moment, but I would imagine some type of landscaping to make kind of a, you know, a landing area for pedestrians.
Low maintenance.
Low maintenance would be the key. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a great design. The road turned out, turned out well. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then last, the, the Cross of Christ for Starkville is gonna come up on Thursday around eleven-thirty. I know they bumped the time up. If you're gonna come out, it'd be Thursday, the twenty-second, around eleven-thirty AM. How you?
Thank you. Alderman Rupp?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sisdrunk?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am, thank you.
No, ma'am, thanks.
Okay. You didn't want to talk about the Yellow Jackets? I'm just giving you an opportunity. I was just telling you. I was talking about MSU. I should've said something about the Yellow Jackets. That's my bad.
Tough game.
Yes, sir.
Lot of things went wrong right there before they happened, so we pulled it out.
And we did, we did. And hopefully we'll do it again this weekend. So, all right. Next item is citizen comments. Anyone wishing to make comments, we have three minutes in which to do so. You may share any thoughts that you have with the board.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Tunnawatt. Seven, our, to the mayor, to the police chief, to the fire chief. Citizens have a few things. We have really made a mess out of the, out of the medical marijuana. Our people is getting real nervous about how we can tell the medical marijuana from the street marijuana. Our, it's making, making them nervous that our, we can't seem to get nothing straight. We voted for it and then come up with all these problems. The electric department, a lot of people are wondering about the high electric bills, even like some clear occasional fires so high. Our, the, the articles that were had in the paper about the sanitation department and garbage, and they would like to get an understanding on where we're going with that. And again, time of year, I hope that we can get our female officers to try to work with the young women on how to protect themselves from rain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to speak to the board? All right, I will close it as citizen comments. And the next item we have, we have no public appearances. We have a public hearing. Mr. Havlin.
Yes, this is the second public hearing on the UDC update. Since the first public hearing, there hasn't been any comments or feedback, so this is the exact same draft that was presented last time at the meeting. And just to read it, some real quick points. In section one, we're adding some verbiage to allow for it to be easier for staff to negotiate with somebody outside of city limits on how to get city services. We also looked in section six point three, which is zoning, just to add some requirements for stuff that's outside in the annexation area or inside in the annexation area, which we also updated the sidewalk ordinance to cover the annexation area. And then the other two big items, so to speak, would be section sixteen, which is just updating the flood ordinance up to FEMA's current requirements. That's a pretty standard thing that comes forth every few years. And then section seventeen is adding up standards for boarding up vacant and occupied structures.
Okay. And have you had any comments from the public at all?
I have not.
Not hurting anyone. All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Havlin? Questions?
Just for occupied. You can board occupied, should go.
I think that's more, let's see, for the building official, but I think like, say, for instance, if a car skips a curve and knocks into the wall of a building, of an apartment building, and they're just boarding up that wall, it just adds the ability to do that.
All right, thank you. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna open. This is a public hearing. This is our second public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular matter, now is your opportunity. Either for or against.
Again, my name is Alvin Tunnawatt. I would just like to know, and people probably like to know, we are enforcing the inspection as we spoke earlier in the year about when we had situation with, with Brooklyn Garden, are we still gonna have those inspections, to be clear?
All right, thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wish to speak either for or against? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Do I have a motion to amend the Unified Development Code as it's presented to us?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Brooks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sisdrunk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, next item is going to be the final plat for Country Club Estates. Mr. Havlin, you are still up.
This is FP twenty-two dash zero one. This is a request by Richard Engineer on behalf of Frank Jones Construction for the Country Club Phase Three E Final Plat. The preliminary plat was approved by the Board of Alderman on September sixth, twenty sixteen. Development Review has reviewed this final plat and has cleared it for approval. The gross acreage of this phase is ten point six five acres, a total of nineteen lots, which gives a gross density of one point seven eight acres per lot. All easements dedications are provided for on the final plat. Gold Triangle Planning Development has reviewed proposed road names and has no issues. Portable water and sanitary sewer due right of by Starkville Utilities and electric service by Fort County Electric. The proposed covenants have been reviewed and approved. The applicant has indicated this subdivision is not part of any previously platted subdivision, and therefore there are no adversely affected parties. And in opinion of the planning department, proposed final plat request could meet the criteria for final plat review and approval. On September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, the planing zoning condition recommended approval with two conditions. The two conditions are shown at the bottom of this slide and also in the staff report. The first one is basically relating to the finished floor elevations for any of the property that is located along the detention area right through here and up through there. And so basically it just says that if the house has to be one foot above any street adjacent to that lot. And then the last condition, which has already been met, was that the covenants be revised to satisfaction of the city attorney and the city engineer prior to being approved by the Board of Alderman.
So that's been met from your perspective?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Anything else? And have you had any comments from the public?
Well, this is not a publicly advertised thing.
I realize that, but you've gone through the process of the business.
There were no, I have received no comments.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the applicant is here. Anything that you wish to add, Mr. Jones, or anyone? No? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, do I have a motion and a second for this particular item?
Move approval.
A motion from Alderman Carver. Go up to second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Brooks. Any discussion? Alderman Rupp?
I realize the city probably doesn't have much choice but to move forward on this. But many of the residents in Country Club Estates who have witnessed the flooding and drainage issues over the years firsthand lack the confidence that the new construction won't make that situation worse. So for that reason, I will not be able to support the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Comments from anyone else? All right, seeing none, if you would please answer, yea, your name. If the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp?
Yea.
Alderman Brooks?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Nay.
Alderman Sisdrunk?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the claims docket. Do I have a? I have a motion from Alderman Sisdrunk. Go up to second. Second from Alderman Brooks. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. And then last but not least, under the sanitation department, I believe everyone received an email from Mr. Latimer, who explained part of the issue. This is under code section thirty-one, seven, thirteen, R. We need to go out for RFP, and that's what this does. So it's a consideration of seeking a request for proposal pursuant to Mississippi Code thirty-one, seven, thirteen, R for solid waste commercial pickup in the city of Starkville. So anyone have any questions or discussion about that? Alderman Beatty?
Is this gonna replace our commercial pickup that we're doing now that's in competition with private companies?
Yes, that would be, that would be a, yes.
Why would we not just get out of the commercial RFP?
Well, that's, well, that would be part of the RFP and how we, how we phrase that. It is, it is a large, it is a large bite to chew if you were to just get out of it entirely. It's, we have three hundred something cans out there, and we have, I don't know how many companies that we service or how many businesses that we service, and I don't think there's any company out there that could take that whole thing. So what we were trying to do was ease our way into contracting it out, seeing how that worked for us. And then if we want to get out of the business entirely, then that is certainly potentially an option.
I mean, that always still gives us some, some control. It seems like the money's just gonna, all we gonna do is subcontract. Money's gonna flow through us to a, to a third party that's gonna do, that's gonna negotiate. We still negotiate, or they negotiate?
We negotiate.
We negotiate the cost of a commercial pickup and waste pro, or whoever, if it's successful, better would be.
Yes.
Would actually put the, put the van out, the can out there and pick it up.
We are, we are in a difficult position in the sense that we have, we have difficulty with the trucks. We are, we are short a truck. We would need to buy a truck. It's just, it's an extremely expensive venture.
I don't have any issue with us, you know, starting to move in this direction. I just, I wouldn't, wouldn't move further. Anyway, that's.
Well, we can see how the RFP comes out, and we can revisit it when we see what we get from the RFP.
Thank you.
Alderman Carver?
That's kinda what I was gonna ask. What's driving this? I'm all for privatization if it saves the city money and headache long-term. Is this something because of the, you know, I don't know, the heaviness of the dumpsters? It's, it's, the trucks rotate in and out faster? Do they go down faster than normal?
They do. And Mr. Smiley could probably give you a chapter and verse on it. But basically, the, the maintenance factor associated with this type of truck is extremely high. We've had difficulty getting them, getting them to, you know, either Meridian or Columbus or Tupelo or West Point or wherever to get serviced. So it's just a frequent maintenance nightmare to be perfectly honest.
The one, or one or maybe two employees that might be affected, they'd be retained in-house somewhere?
That would be one employee that we've got, and Mr. Ashford and Mr. Smiley have been working toward making sure that that gentleman is satisfied and remains part of the city.
It would be a steady buyback of the containers over time?
That, that was the plan, is to have, well, the original plan, and that's how we'll put this RFP out, is to say, you know, they will begin to purchase them in tranches, that's the, that's the word these days, in batches. Because that also, that's a large number of cans. They're expensive, and so, you know, that would be a major bite as well.
Last question was, you know, as these trucks come in, I know a lot of places in town, they buckle that concrete up. I was just thinking, is that something the city will maintain those spots in front of the dumpsters? Or is that private company because they're the ones taking the job? You know what I'm talking about? I could probably ride you around tomorrow and tell you four or five places that it just seeps up.
Well, part of what we do when, when we establish a business is we tell them that they have to put their concrete X, X amount thick so that it will withstand that process. And there are places that do, and we go back to them. In fact, there are a couple right now that we're dealing with that we're going back to and say, you've got to repair this area because we can't any longer bring our trucks in there because it damages our trucks. So it's up to the business owner.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's something that could, I know from a return standpoint, these garbage trucks aren't cheap. So do you have anything else you'd like to add to it?
Mr. Smiley, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Any good?
Okay. Thank you. That's very kind of you. I'm sorry. Yes, we do need a motion. I was gonna see if Alderman Vaughn.
Mayor, this, this concerned me a lot because we, how we got ourselves to this point. And what really concerned me, we got ourselves to this point. It seemed like when it come down to the sanitation department, we don't never want to purchase a truck for them. And so you, you got your rear end loader and your front end loader. Those are the only thing really that generate revenue for us. And because all the recycling, there's nothing in recycling to generate no revenue, nothing. We don't make nothing off recycling. We don't make nothing off right-of-way cutting. We don't make nothing off street sweeping. We don't make anything off rubbish truck. But it's in his budget though. He uses his budget, but we pay out of it, out of his budget in order to get these things done. So he would never, he would never generate a general fund. And, and if we, if we do this, the only thing revenue that he will be is coming from residential customer and commercial customer. That's the only revenue that coming in to sanitation department. So if we do that, how are we gonna set this cost? But I know you said Friday, talking about increasing, increasing the rates. I thought about the increase in the rates. You can increase the rates, and we just gave the employees a raise. So we increased the, we increased the sanitation rates. That, that gonna take what you just given them back. I mean, I, I, we, something, how did we get ourselves in this condition, first of all? We, we in a situation that we don't even buy a truck for what's, Starkville is growing fast. And so the fastest thing that we got growing, we wanna get rid of it. We wanna outsource it. And my concern is now, if we outsource this, the sanitation department soon will be behind it. We gonna be outsourcing that, just like we did parking and recreation if we do that. That's my concern. It really concerns me how we can get to sanitation department if we do never want to purchase a truck. But we can purchase fire truck. We can purchase everything else. But when it come down to the sanitation department, we don't want to purchase nothing. Because his money, all the revenue that he got, he taking care of outside stuff, just like I call it. Recycling, right-of-way cutting, street sweeping, rubbish truck. He taking all that, and no money coming in for that. So the only two places we gonna be generating revenue from is residential and commercial, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So the next thing you gonna do, the next thing, I hope I don't be here to do it. I don't want to be here to make that decision. I don't want to be here to make that decision. The next thing we'll do, we're going to outsource the whole sanitation department, and then where is the love for the city coming from? Where is the best thing for the city if we can keep our own sanitation department?
May I, may I respond to that one?
You can respond.
Okay. I will never, in fact, if somebody does it, I'll veto it, so you better have five coming at you. I have no intention of outsourcing the residential sanitation component because that touches our residents every day. We go back, we give them extra service in multiple ways, and so, this has nothing to do with residential sanitation service. You got me on record, so, you know, it's going to have to happen after twenty twenty-five. But the commercial piece of this, now Mr. Smiley has brought this, this was, and I'm not going to throw you under the bus here or under the garbage can, Mr. Smiley, but this was one of the things that he was gravely concerned about from a commercial standpoint. And so, those trucks are maintenance trucks, and he's got one that's two thousand and twelve, is that right? Okay, so we've, we've got trucks that we have, a fairly new one, but one that's quite old, and then we've got another one that's, that's fairly old as well, so we are looking at having to buy new ones, but we have bought new residential trucks recently, fairly, fairly recently. So I would push back on you a little bit saying that we aren't willing to buy them trucks because we have. The commercial trucks, I think it was unforeseen that we were going to have the difficulties that we're having with a couple of them right now. We didn't anticipate it happening this soon, and so because it's a, a portion of the service that we provide that is up for privatization or that private businesses can go get a different service, we are not in a position to tell them they can't so that we get poached from time to time, and that continues to reduce our revenue source, and so you know, from that standpoint, I think it's wiser of us to privatize what makes sense and what the private sector can do better, but the private sector cannot do residential pickup better than we can, and that's just my opinion, so. What, Alderman Vaughn is still that's all.
It's just, it's just, I don't see how we got ourselves in this condition that we can't afford a truck. They going to make twice as much as that we going to be making with that picking up they do, and then most of all, the service that they going to render, are they going to come back and redo some things if they do, they got a cost behind it? I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm, something is driven this, and you can say that it's not going to happen upon your watch, but when your watch is over, it going to happen. It going to happen when your watch is over because it's nothing to, it's nothing to hold, it's nothing there to hold it. Once your watch is over, this is going to happen.
I would like to think that our service to the community is, is of paramount importance.
I just, I don't, I don't, I don't see it, I, I can't see how we, how we jeopardize our sanitation department like we did parking and recreation. This mean a lot. This, this mean a lot to this community, a fast-growing community. I cannot see us outsourcing this or privatizing whatever you want to call it, it's the same thing as outsourcing. I cannot see us giving all this revenue up to somebody else when we can bring it to our own city. We can, we can bring, put it in our own general fund. I cannot see it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty.
Mayor, how many, maybe to Mr. Smiley, how many commercial garbage customers do we have?
If you would come forward, Mr. Smiley.
I got a question I want to ask him too.
Okay, Mr. Carver will have the floor after Mr. Beatty, and then I'll come back to you.
Approximately.
Good evening, Board.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor. Three hundred and twelve.
How many commercial customers are, approximately are in the city start? What percentage of the commercial business do we have versus private companies?
Right now, we currently have eighty-five departments that we service, and we have two hundred and twenty-seven businesses.
But the, but the Waste Pros and the companies like that, are they, aren't, aren't businesses, can't they go directly to those companies and contract direct with them, or do they, do they come through us and we bill them for something? What, aren't there other carriers, other companies that are providing commercial garbage service to businesses that start right now?
Yes, sir, that's kind of what's driving force behind this. Over the several years, we've been steadily losing our commercial service to different ones because we don't have a franchise. So, a lot of times, I give example of some of our big franchise restaurants, your Buffalo Wild Wings, your Chick-fil-A's, your Starbucks. They don't leave us because our service not do it. They leave us because they choose to want to have commercial recycling, and we don't offer commercial recycling. So a lot of times, it's not about the quality of our service, it's just we can't provide the service.
Are we competitive on the price?
As far as from a pricing standpoint, we're close, but we're not nowhere.
So if you took, what, the three hundred something twenty we have, fifteen twenty we have, what is that as a percentage of the total number? I mean, how many, how many customers do these other businesses have? How many total, uh, commercial customers are in the city start, do you know?
I don't have that number, but we all divided between, you have some Golden Triangle, you have Waste Management, you have Waste Pro, so it's all divided for the commercial.
The difference in residential and commercial garbage start is we're captive on, on the residential, right? We have a franchise, as you would say, we, to, to service only a residential customer city start, correct?
And that also includes eighty-five apartment complexes that we provide service by dumpsters.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Alderman Carver.
Couple more things I thought about, I, I was going to ask, so basically it all sounds like it's in, we're not in a position to which we can prohibit commercial service. Is that true, city attorney?
That's correct.
Could that bleed over into the residential side? Could we not prohibit somebody from picking up residential trash?
Yeah, I hadn't had a chance, sir, hadn't been asked to look at that, I'm happy to look at that and have a firm answer on that, I just don't know right now.
Oh yeah, I just, I don't.
Our ordinance says no, any residential services pickup by city.
French, French, I'm right.
Yes.
I heard that, I just hadn't read it recently.
Our sanitation ordinance says that residential will be picked up.
We could have an ordinance that says not pick up commercial services as well?
Well, we, we could certainly have an ordinance that says, you wouldn't have an ordinance that says we're not going to pick up commercial service, you have an ordinance that says that we would be requiring into franchise with us, but I think that ship is probably already sailed, they'd have to pull back from contracts that they've already got unless you exempted those who are currently under contract.
Again, I'm all for privatization, it sounds like commercial services, it's, you know, it's not, it is one employee, is that correct? That can just operate that truck by itself, is that the only person that's going to be offset of the job? Is one employee? Potentially. So, yeah, I definitely think that ordinance is in place, and I think there's some really valid points, we need to make sure we safeguard our, our employees and the, the rest of the department. I do think in this business, you know, obviously the dump is closed out here on Old West Point Road, and you know, if no one on this board, if you're not ridden out in the dump, I tell you, you need to do that, it's, it's a lot of wear and tear on vehicles, and you'll see the trucks lined up. And the last thing I was going to ask, and this is a very basic question, I've never gotten a clear answer to this. When the trash is outside the bin and it gets picked up and bus saved by a private company, whose responsibility is the trash left on the ground? Because I know the mayor and I talk frequently, it seems as if people are littering now more than ever, and you and I talk about this. Whose responsibility is the trash on the ground? We see it everywhere in town, whose responsibility is to get that trash off the ground and get it into that dumpster for the next pickup?
As far, that's one of the things from a municipality standpoint, we do it for our dumpsters, but on the private side, they don't do it.
Is that something we have not been doing a good job of, but we could probably hold the feet to the fire on the commercial side?
That's a code enforcement issue, and yes, we can do it through code enforcement.
Yeah, that's just something I get a lot, I know we all get a lot of calls about litter, so, how you?
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn.
Mr. Smiley, thank you, thank you, thank you for the service that you were into us. How did we get to this point? How we stopped, how we got out of franchise, and how did we get out of that, first of all? You say we don't, we, we don't franchise like we used to, how did we get out of there? What caused that to happen to us?
That's a question I truly can't answer, it was done before my time, you know, you have to go back in your history on the actual minutes when it was done.
Vice Mayor, do you know?
Mayor, there you may speak.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, go right ahead.
Well, Mayor, let me kind of summarize where we are. Mayors, I understand this is a recommendation from the department head.
Yes, sir.
And given the fact that this is a recommendation from the department head, we have to, in my opinion, apply a cost-benefit analysis on this. And let me just be very brief as I can, but yet fully answer the gentleman from seven, but I think I want this table to know and in this room that I'm consistent in supporting the, the recommendation of every department head, including the mayor. So this department head, we hire him to run this city. As it relates to sanitation environmental services, I'm not going to go against this recommendation, I think no one can call my hand on it, because I'm consistent on every recommendation that's made by every department head, including the mayor of the city of Starkville. So as to this issue, we all have heard the discussion. In response to the gentleman from seven, the history, I mean, of course, we have to look at the facts just like we do in any given situation and look at the totality of the facts and the circumstances, I'm just responding as clean as I can to answer the question as best as I can, attorney. That front end loaders, I understand there were, there were at least about three drivers, and we down to about one. And the mayor has made a commitment, and we're going to have to step out on good faith, and I, and certainly, the gentleman from seven, in all great respect to your dialogue here, as to the residential, the mayor has made a commitment that, that we're the best in the business, and I, I concur with the mayor, they're doing a great job, and Mr. Smiley, I'm going to be very brief, but it takes a lawyer a little bit longer to explain things, so, but, but, you know, but Mr. Smiley, you're, you're residential, your staff is doing exemplary job, I see them when, when they don't see me. I mean, they're doing an excellent job all over town, and, and you're providing great leadership, and they understand who, who is in charge. I mean, they understand who's in charge, they know what to do and how to do it, and so and as it gets to the gentleman from seven's question, this instance here tonight is, you know, it's got down to a business decision, and certainly, we sup, and I say the vice mayor want to support our in-house employees, but we only talked about three trucks and three vehicles and basically one left. And I think, as a matter of fact, the mayor said that we're going to do everything we can in conjunction and working with our human resource director to try to keep the employee, if the circumstances allow that, without making any commitment, so I'm, gentleman from seven, that's the, the explanation about how we should proceed. I think we should proceed, and, and it's been mentioned tonight too that that the, the cost, it seems board and honorable colleagues rather, and the mayor, that, and city attorney, that, you know, the, the cost is, is greatly in excess of, of the revenue. The mayor mentioned about getting equipment to the various locations to Tupelo, it's cost a lot, I'm sure to tow one of those big front end loaders to, to Jackson, to Tupelo, to Meridian, and we just don't have the, the clientele base. And when you look at the, the expenses side of it versus the revenue side of it, we're just, as I understand it from the mayor who's here every day with the staff and, and the department head who we hired to run the department, that we're, we're just in a hole, and his recommendation, and gentleman from seven, with all great respect to your inquiries, I hope I've answered as best I can, I'm not being personal, but at the same time being objective, attorney, I hope I'm, I'm staying in that lane, and I'm doing my best, but with all that being said, you know, it, the proposal and conclusion here, in all great respect and looking at all the evidence here, that's all I'm going to look at, not the politics and anything else, not say that politics on the table, but looking at all the evidence, I'm going to support, and speaking to the gentleman from seven's question, I'm going to support the recommendation because the, the expenses outweigh the, the benefit they were deriving, and, and plus, the department head has, has answered our, the gentleman from five and other questions so intellectually, I mean, so responsibly. He's done a very great job, and he's very unmoving on his recommendation, so honorable gentleman from seven, and tell my distinguished colleagues and the mayor, you know, that I must stand in support of the, of the department head recommendation, he's doing a great job, and we, I'm going to allow him to lead the department, and and I'm going to be consistent with every department head's recommendation, including yours. So that's where I am tonight.
Thank you. And Alderman, Vaughn, let me say real quick, my recollection, I think this, I think the change in the franchise occurred when I was CEO, because at one point in time, we had, I believe in our ordinance, some language about the franchise for businesses, but as businesses began to ask for things that we could not provide, then we began to lose them because we couldn't, we could not hold them if we couldn't give them the service that they wanted. And so that's when that began to change, and I think that changed in one of those ordinances that occurred during, since two thousand and five. So hopefully, that's a little bit of an answer.
I, I was going to ask you, I was going to ask you, Mr. Smiley personally, how do you feel about this move? Even though you might have brought it, but I don't know whether you forced to bring it, or what, how do you really feel about this move?
No, sir, it wasn't a situation where I was forced with this, but it was a situation where it was a proactive approach from my standpoint, because on the sanitation side of it, I see things that I try to keep y'all from seeing, so from the expense side, we dealing with no in-house mechanic, we dealing with towing be of nineteen hundred dollars before we even get into shop doors, because the tow garbage truck is expensive. And if you ask any of the surrounding municipalities or any of the private waste haulers, those commercial garbage trucks are the hardest trucks to keep up from a standpoint, so it wasn't no situation where I was forced, it's just a proactive approach to try to make sure it's not a situation, one, two years down the road, that we can't provide the service and we embarrass the city of Starkville, so it wasn't a situation where I was forced in no type of way, it was just all about looking towards the future, you know, we, we're not going to be in a situation to where we're going to actually franchise or where we're going to actually invest in commercial recycling, because from a cost standpoint, you had to invest a lot in it to get back to where we were. So current, where we currently at right now, it just wasn't too wise, unless everybody was in support to go that way. Because with us not having an actual contract, is, your money is not protected. At any time, the private haulers, they have contracts, that's how they protect their money. Our money is not protected on the commercial side, so it's just a proactive approach.
Why we doesn't have a contract because we're a municipality?
Once again, that's kind of not from the director's standpoint on why we don't have a contract.
Thank you for your service so much, you can make numbers or anything, you can crunch numbers any kind of way and make them fit. How you, Mayor?
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Beatty.
Mr. Smiley, tell me about, you said a number of businesses will contract with a private hauler because of the, the recycle aspect, what, what, are they made, are these like restaurants or things that have to meet us, through their franchisee or their company, whatever, certain, I mean, what, what drives people, what's driving these customers to leave us for the, that, for the potential to be able to recycle part of their, or just lower in their waste stream? What, what do they do, what's, what's the purpose on that?
Well, the biggest part of it, just say if we put two dumpsters there, everything with our price is going to be from a garbage standpoint, so they can get a cost reduction if they recycle their cardboard or recycle their plastic, of course, their garbage, then it can go down, so a lot of the private sector can offer both for what we do for just one game.
Mayor, I know that in Meridian, some of these places that, that went to commercial, of course, they have commercial pickup for residential, but a lot of them have commercial pickup for small businesses still by the, by the residential trucks, they call it incidental office type waste where they put, or still put a, a bag, an insurance office or a lawyer's office, something like that, and the city, the city or the, the residential truck picks that up. But in, like in Meridian, I think, but we could check on some of these places, you probably, you may know, they've gotten totally out of the commercial garbage business, the, the business, the ones that have to have a dumpster in the back, they contract directly with Waste Pro or Waste Management, whoever it is down that part of the state, they go directly to them and, and negotiate their contract directly with them. And, and Meridian's not the only place too, that's, it's not unusual to see that done.
Yes, Starkville and Oxford are one, only two municipalities in state of the city that's still providing a commercial service from front loads.
Thank you, you do a great job.
Thank you so much, anyone else? All right, if not, I need a motion, and this would be to seek request for proposals for solid waste and commercial pickup. Do I have a motion? A motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second?
Sir.
Second from Alderman Beatty. If you would please answer yea or nay as the city court calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Rupp.
Yea.
Alderman Brooks.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, with a vote of six to one, motion carries, thank you everyone, appreciate the discussion. That carries us to the end of the meeting or the end of the agenda, we don't, we do not have an executive session, so if you'll allow me, I'll read the language calling for a work session, and then we will entertain a motion to adjourn. In accordance with the notice required under Mississippi annuity twenty-five, forty-one, thirteen, board will be having a work session on the thirtieth of September twenty twenty-two at eleven AM. The second floor conference room of City Hall located at one-ten West Main Street, notice should be provided of the work session within one hour of this meeting, by posting such notice at City Hall. Notice should be made part of the minutes of the board meeting, work session. The work session will be open to public meeting, the city of Starkville and the public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Yea.
Second from Alderman Rupp. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Turn your phones back on.